Welcome, everybody. It is 5:30 PM on Tuesday, March 11th, and I'm calling this regular city council meeting to order. We are going to start with an executive session, and there are three things on that executive session, so I'll read those now. "City Council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551-071 and 551-072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate regarding the proposed real estate acquisition of an easement located in the future Agnes Street location." Item 2B, "City Council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551-071 and 551-151 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding an economic development agreement with Burleson East LLC." Item 2C, "City Council shall convene into a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551-071 and 551-072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate regarding the Valverde subdivision development and associated fees." It is 5:31, and we are in executive session. Okay, it is 6:05, 6:06 PM, and we are back from executive session. Unlike prior executive sessions, we have action on all three items. So let's start with item 2A. Counsel, is there a motion?
Yeah, I move to direct legal counsel to finalize the settlement agreement regarding the Nixon track and as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Second.
Counselperson Plunkett with the motion, counselperson Lee with the second.
Sorry.
Any additional discussion, counsel? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion on item 2B?
Yes, I motion to bring back the agreement for final approval.
Second.
A motion from counselperson Foster and a second from counselperson Plunkett. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion on item 2B carries unanimously. Item 2C, a motion.
Yes, I motion to authorize legal counsel to do final review and approval of Valverde agreements and authorize the city manager to sign agreements after legal has approved.
Second.
Motion from counselperson Foster, a second from counselperson Lee. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion for item 2C carries unanimously. Okay, so we are now on to item 4, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. And the two individuals named here, I do not believe are in the room, and so we're gonna just move on anyway. So let's stand up and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Is Dale Burke here? Okay.
I'm on the 6:30.
Yep. Well then, everybody, let's bow our heads. Dear Lord, we beseech thee for wisdom. As we discuss and deliberate the items on the agenda today, Lord, we pray for wisdom to know the best things to do for the residents of the city of Bastrop. And, Lord, we pray that in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
We will now move on to item 6A, Mayor Protem's report. I have a few events that we all participated, or a number of us participated in, depends on which one it was. On March 1st, I attended the Bastrop County Care's Fatherhood Summit. I want to thank you to Martin Gonzalez for his work in strengthening fathers in Bastrop County. It's an important thing, and they're doing great work. On March 2nd, I gave the toast at the Texas X's Independence Day Event at 602 on Main. Turns out, the opening of the University of Texas for Classes and the opening of that building were only seven years apart, 1883 versus 1890. So, you know, when you're walking around our historic downtown, it goes back a ways. March 6th, a number of us welcomed Josh Coy back to First National Bank. He's a community servant, a former Man of the Year from the Chamber of Commerce, and we congratulate him and also First National Bank on his new role. Friday, March 7th, we, a number of us, counselperson Foster and I, revealed the bird sculpture at 95 and Chestnut across the street from Film Alley, and that is a hummingbird. And Foster and I spoke along with the Cultural Arts Commission, thank you to Maria, and the Cultural Arts Commission, and the private donors who made the statue possible. We have, I think it's seven more locations coming soon, some of those approved by council, but a plan laid out for our Bird City statues that we're building. And then today, I gave a blessing and prayer at the mayor's prayer luncheon for each of us on council, the city manager, all our city staff, and the city itself, and I was there with counselpersons Meyer and Plunkett. And that's all I've got. So now, we will move on to council members' reports. Counselperson Lee.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Good evening, city of Bastrop. So I spent a lot of the last two weeks downtown. There's been a lot, there's been a lot of activity in downtown Bastrop, especially at the museum. March is International Women's History Month, and the museum kicked off the celebrations on March 1st by honoring and celebrating women of Bastrop. It was very, very informative, very informative curation of women who made their marks on historic preservation in the city, women who started the Elgin Courier and the Bastrop Advertiser, and education, and music, midwifery. Just, it was very, very informative about how much women played a role in developing the Bastrop we know today. The museum also had what was called airing of quilts. So there are quilts all around downtown, downtown and in the museum, and apparently that is a big business, that there are millions of people that are still making quilts. So they, that, those displays are still up in the museum. And then they're still celebrating Women's History Month by showcasing our very own Terry Lynn Moore, who will be singing a mix of country and pop at the museum Saturday, March 15th, from 12:00 PM to 2:00, I believe, and it's free. First Friday Art Walk was a buzz with the Texas Independence theme, lots of people walking around in their boots and entering into the photo contest to win $350. Not sure who won, but, and I think our flash mob came back from the winter break and made an appearance. Lot, lot of activity. You're in town, the musical I went and saw, lots of new cast have joined the Bastrop Opera House, and they did a phenomenal job with that musical. I didn't know what it was about, that is the name initially when I went in there, but it was a very, very good display. So there was a little movie called Debbie's Promise filmed here in Bastrop, and they're having their red carpet premiere March the 17th in Austin. So if you're interested, it's open. I think I paid $30 for the red carpet event, but it was filmed at our courthouse and surrounding area, so, and I actually am in the movie at the very end, so yes, I'm going to go. And then the last thing I wanted to do was thank the city manager for organizing our little trip to Farmersville to visit the, or take a look at the wastewater treatment plant that we might possibly be discussing down the road. I'm a visual person, so when we saw the screen presentation, I didn't really know if it was gonna work, but when I actually saw it, and they literally walked us through the process, it made a lot more sense. So I'm looking forward to finding out more about that and how we're gonna be able to possibly use that to save money. Last thing, the library board is gonna be hosting lots of activities next week for spring break, so if you have kiddos that need something to do, please visit our library. Thank you.
Counselperson Meyer.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep this really short because I don't think you're here to listen about me, but I want to let y'all know tomorrow at noon from 12 to 1, at the museum, there's going to be our Pioneer Four Mothers' Lunch and Learn, and you bring your own lunch, but they're gonna provide dessert, which is from Simply Sweet Cupcakes. So go learn and eat some cupcakes, and it'll be a lot of fun. But I also wanted to thank our Mayor Protem, John Kirkland, for the wonderful prayer today that he gave for the city and all the citizens at the mayor's lunch that was sponsored by the Bastrop Christian Ministerial Alliance. So I really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselperson Plunkett.
I'll be even shorter and pass.
Counselperson Foster.
Hi, y'all. I wanted to remind you of the Master Gardener Sale this Saturday. It's the spring plant sale, happens twice a year. It's from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Mayfest Park. Come early, 'cause we always sell out pretty fast. And I also wanted to put on your calendars, Wednesday, April 30th, it's called Work in Bastrop. There is a job fair readiness workshop from 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and then that same day there's a hiring event from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So that's on Wednesday, April 30th, here at the Convention Center, and it's put on by the chamber, the city, the Bridging Bastrop Board, Workforce Solutions, and Chamber Foundation of Bastrop County. So that's awesome. Thanks, y'all.
Item 6C, city manager's report.
Could I have a point, question?
Certainly.
On item 6C, number five, we're gonna be giving, our city manager will give a report on the North End Prairie, and since there is a conflict with councilmember Foster on this issue, even with a report, would it be proper and ethical for her to leave the room?
I think that might be a question for the city attorney.
So what the conflict of interest rules in the charter require is no deliberation. The question of remaining in the room is sort of a parliamentary, procedures vary. If that has been the past practice, it may be prudent to do so if, if it touches on deliberation.
I'm happy to do that. That's no problem. Victoria, should I add that to my file list? Yeah.
So then, Madam City Manager, let's go ahead and go through everything except for North End Prairie, and then we can take that up at the end.
Okay. Just a point of order, the children who are going to do the pledge of allegiance are here. Can we give them an opportunity to be acknowledged?
Yes, certainly.
So if we could have Davy La Fuente and Devin La Fuente, sixth graders of Bastrop Intermediate School, come up to the dial. These are the children of our very own Ashton La Fuente. So we had our council meeting a little bit earlier, and so we had to go ahead and say the pledge, but why don't you tell the council and the folks at home and in the audience a little bit about yourselves?
I am Davy La Fuente, and I am in sixth grade, and I have a twin sister.
What's your favorite thing about sixth grade?
Um, probably pre-athletics, 'cause I enjoy it.
What's pre-athletics?
It's like a program kind of like PE, but it's like middle school, kind of.
It's better than PE, your mom says. What about you?
My name is Devin La Fuente, and I have a twin sister.
You have a twin sister.
Yeah, my favorite part about sixth grade is probably also pre-athletics.
Wonderful. So we normally get a picture with you and the council, so we're gonna let you stand over here, and we will get a picture of you that your mom will, I'm sure, frame in a really embarrassing place at your house.
Come on, counsel, let's go get a picture.
And a shout out to Pastor Burke, who we also missed.
Yeah, he came and went. Devin and Davy, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Yes, thank you. So we have a couple of items on the calendar for the next couple of months. The first is March 22nd is our citywide cleanup. We did have to postpone that from February 22nd due to some really cold weather. It is an all hands on deck day. We're going to be building a park, we're going to be doing a lot of main street cleanup, our hydrants will be testing, there's so many volunteer opportunities, and almost every single city employee will be out and about. We've got t-shirts that say, you know, "City of Bastrop." So if you see us out, honk, toss them a bottle of water, not throw, toss them a bottle of water, as we get the city spring-ready. We've had a lot of questions about who's running for mayor and who's running for council, and where are they on the ballot? So we'll clear that up really quick. The mayor's race, Willie de la Rosa is in first position, Ward Northcutt, second position, and Ish Meyer's, third position. In the council race for place one, first position, John Kirkland, second position, Cheryl Lee. Place five, Perry Lowe, first position, and Cecilia Serna, second position. And so those are our candidates who will be on the ballot in May.
So I'm running for, John and I are running for place five, or am I reading that wrong? It should be place five, John Kirkland and Cheryl Lee.
It's backwards. Okay, so the historic bridge bids are out tomorrow on 3/12, and those are due on 4/3, so we expect to have an award shortly thereafter. That will come with a bond request, a borrower request, for the remaining 15 million or so that's gonna get the bridge up and running. So that should be a 16 to 18 month process. So I'll skip North End Prairie. So the other question that is at super, super concern is 10005 Pecan. And 10005 Pecan did submit a plat, their review, that review is due this Thursday. They did come in under the lot size minimum changes, and so they are submitting an administrative plat for three narrow lots, 6200 square feet lots. So we have one lot turning into three. So for folks who keep saying, "You're rushing, you're rushing, you're rushing," here you go.
Yes.
So we've had a lot of questions about North End Prairie. I met with a group of residents on Sunday trying to explain the process, but I'm understanding there are very many, many questions, and one of the things that is being said is, "We're being told it's a done deal." Well, no, it's not a done deal. There is a preliminary plat right now under review, and so let me give you a little bit of history. North End Prairie submitted what is called a neighborhood regulating plan, and it's a neighborhood regulating plan because they did not have to go through a rezoning. They still have to show how it's gonna drain, how things are gonna be divided, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So as of 3/11, several items are of concern. Drainage continues to be a major concern. Traffic and street widths continue to be a major concern. These are preliminary steps. There's still a final plat that needs to have public improvement plans, et cetera. So no, it is not a done deal at all at this time. That's the plat that I showed you last meeting, that's the plat that is under review at this time. The lots range from 1462 feet to 4400 square feet. And we did receive a request for grandfathering status for several of the ordinances that have been approved and are due to be approved in the next meeting or so. Everything from lot size minimums to impervious cover, et cetera, et cetera. This is going to be heard at the March 20th Development Review Committee, I believe, with a due date to the applicant due by March the 26th. Should staff deny the grandfathering status, it gets appealed to the city manager. Should the city manager deny the grandfathering status, it gets appealed to the zoning board of adjustment. Should the zoning board of adjustment deny the appeal, it goes straight to district court. There you go. Thank you.
So we have one individual who actually signed up to speak on this item, and it was on the agenda, and so I, I'm gonna let her speak at this time. It's Heather Green. Your name and your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello, good evening. My name is Heather Green, and I live at 2007 Pecan Street. I am here speaking on behalf of myself and 12 of my neighbors to again bring to your, to your attention concerns regarding the North End Prairie proposal being brought before you tonight. While I understand the need for growth, and I am deeply concerned about how this development will affect my home, those of my neighbors, and our community as a whole. This development is a proposed 42-home establishment on a mere four acres. One of my biggest concerns is the lack of transparency with those involved in this whole project. The current property owner, Jody Smith, has done her best to muddy the waters when it comes to the details of this development. After speaking with my neighbors, I have come to the conclusion that each of us was told a different story, most of which held no foundation, and some weren't even given the decency of being told anything at all. This lack of transparency raises serious concerns about what else may be overlooked or misrepresented in this project. Beyond the confusion surrounding the details, we have real tangible concerns about how this development will impact our daily lives. These include issues such as parking, drainage problems, increased traffic congestion, overcrowding, and the overall character of our neighborhood. I want to take a few, take a moment to highlight just a few of these pressing concerns. Perhaps the most alarming issue with this proposal is the lack of complete, the complete lack of approved drainage system for this development. In 2016, our neighborhood experienced a devastating flood that caused my family to have two vehicles totaled out, and while others in my neighborhood had standing water in their homes. Without a proper and well-planned drainage solution in this place, this development all but guarantees that we will face repeated flooding in the future. It is unacceptable to move forward with a project of this scale without addressing the real risks it poses to existing homeowners. Additionally, there is a complete lack of planning for parking. Despite the density of this development, there are currently not enough parking spots designated. On top of that, the planned street within the subdivision is too narrow for, for parking on the street. This means that residents and their guests will have no choice but to park on Pecan and Hill Street, streets that are already in daily use by current homeowners. On top of that, my mom had a car parked on the street that was sideswiped in a hit-and-run. At the very least, we deserve honest and clear communication about what is being planned and how it will impact our homes and our community. We are asking this council for transparency, not just from the developers, but from you, our city leaders. We deserve to know exactly what is being approved, how our concerns are being addressed, and what safeguards we will put in place to protect the current residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Heather. Do we also have Mr. Caballero here?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. going to move these items up. So counsel, we're going to move up to item, items 10A and 10B. So first, we're gonna do 10A, and then second, 10B. Oh, yes. 10A is consider and act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-29, authorizing the appointment of Jay Caballero as Associate Municipal Judge of the City of Bastrop Municipal Court to complete an unexpired term ending on June 19th, 2025, and reappointing said judge for an additional two-term effective June 20th, 2025. So counsel, yeah, go ahead.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from counselperson Plunkett. We have a second from counselperson Meyer. Any discussion, counsel? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion 10A passes unanimously. So now we're going to move on to item 10B, swearing oath of office of incoming Associate Judge Jay Caballero by the Honorable Chris Dugan, State District Judge, District 423.
Excellent. Years ago? Uh-oh, there's a whole nother story there.
Yeah, I wanna ask questions.
All right, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jay Caballero, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Associate Municipal Judge Bastrop Municipal Court of the City of Bastrop, of the state of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state. So help me God. Congratulations. You bet. You bet. Run away, we have paperwork, and then you have to get to work.
That's with you, Judge, that's with you, Judge Denny.
Mr. Caballero? I apologize. I literally just got out of trial, so there is another oath that you must bear. I, Jay Caballero, do solemnly swear that I have not directly, that I have not directly, or indirectly, paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute, any money or thing, of value, or promised any public office, or employment, for the given, or withholding, of a vote, at the election, at which I was elected, or as a reward, to secure my appointment, or confirmation, whichever the case may be. So help me God. Congratulations again.
So we're gonna go to item 6D, receive the annual racial profiling presentation from the City of Bastrop Police Department.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and counsel. This evening I have for you a presentation on the City of Bastrop Police Department's 2020 on the City of Bastrop Police Department's 2024 Racial Profiling Report. Each year, the chief administrator of a law enforcement agency is required to submit, as outlined by the State of Texas law, an annual report to the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement and our city council. In 2024, the City of Bastrop Police Department conducted 3,667 traffic stops. The traffic stops resulted in either a warning being issued, a citation, a warning being issued with an arrest, or a citation with an arrest. As it relates to gender, we conducted 1,381 stops on individuals who identify as female, 2,286 stops on individuals that identify as male. Of the 3,667 traffic stops, 11, or 0.29%, were identified by the officer as knowing the race of the driver prior to the stop. Usually, this is if a person has a warrant, and they're aware of who the person is driving the car. This slide breaks down the race of the individual stopped as categorized by the State of Texas. So, for Alaska Native, Native American, our stops were 0.76%; Asian Pacific Islander, 1.88%; Black, 11.86%; Hispanic or Latino, 34.19%; and White, 51.29% of our stops. This slide, it's not included in our racial profiling report. It's not a requirement, but it's a statistic I figured you would be interested in. 1,403 traffic stops that we conducted identified as living in the 78602 area code. That could be county or city. We don't break that down. This slide lists the probable cause reasons for our traffic stops, moving violations at 53.31%, pre-existing knowledge, 0.8 vehicle traffic violation, 44.34, and violation of law at 1.52. So, a moving traffic violation example would be speeding. Pre-existing knowledge, it could be somebody that's on a cell phone. Vehicle traffic violation would be defective headlight, or violation of law could be an expired registration. Of the 3,667 traffic stops, 133 of these vehicles were searched. That would be less than 4%. And then, of the 133 vehicles, 114 of them vehicles, so over 85%, contraband was discovered. The types of contraband we discover are typically alcohol, drugs, other, which is going to be like drug paraphernalia, currency, weapons, or stolen property. And as you can see, drugs was the predominant item that we discovered. So, of the 367 traffic stops conducted by the City of Bastrop Police Department, we had zero uses of force that resulted in bodily injury. Our department also received zero racial profiling complaints for 2024. If you have, if the public has compliments or complaints for our department, you can log online to our homepage and make a compliment or complaint, or you can come in person and make the complaint at the police department. One of the newest things that we have just implemented is citizens can now request traffic enforcement in their area of concern, and they can do this also on our website. And that is it. Any questions?
Can you go back to the types of contraband, searches, types of contraband slide? There, yes. You may not know, and that's okay, but I like the details on the last two, currency and weapons. Just in general, you know, people should be allowed to travel with currency, and people can travel with weapons. So, I just want to understand the details behind those, and I wouldn't expect you to just know it off the top of your head, so.
So, typically, it's going to be stolen weapons or weapons that are not legal in the State of Texas. The currency is, it's usually, off the top of my head, it's normally money that is associated with drug transactions.
And I could completely see that, but, no, but I've heard of people traveling across state to make a very large transaction where they're, you know, traveling with, say, $30,000. They get stopped in a small town somewhere, and then they get that money confiscated because, simply because they're traveling with it. And I want to make sure we're not doing that.
No, we're not.
Okay.
I can tell you, the last time that we've done it, it was probably a couple of years ago, and usually, we go through a very lengthy process. We have to turn it over to the district attorney within three days. They get court hearings, all that type of stuff. This is not from anything such as that, but I can provide you with the details on these.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate you, Chief, on no uses of force and no racial profiling complaints. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. At the request of the city manager, we're going to remove item 7A, and we'll cover that in the next regular meeting. So, we're going to move on to item 8, citizens' comments, and we're going to start with Linda Curtis, who says she wishes to speak.
Yes, I'm Linda Curtis. I live a couple blocks outside the city on South Shore Road. And I have a very, very brief comment. It's really a question, but I don't think you can answer my question. I do not really understand how you could start a meeting that was noticed, sent out by postcard, has been on your website as starting at 6:30, but then I found out last minute from somebody who told me, I got to be down there at 5:30. And your program says it starts at 5:30. I don't get that.
So, I will go ahead and respond to that because it is our agenda. We started early because we had an executive session, and we wanted to be able to cover that. And then, we are aware about the 6:30 posting for the items for individual consideration, the development items. And so, Councilperson Foster and I had discussed that we were going to not cover those items until we got to 6:30. Right now, being 6:41, we've already cleared that hurdle and would have met the terms of the notifications that we sent out. So, I think we're okay on that one. Thank you, though. Next, we have citizens' comments from Cecilia Serna. Hey, Mr. Leibowitz, you're after her.
Cecilia Serna, 1104 Hill Street. I have general comments I wanted to make. I like to watch the YouTube city council meetings, and whenever I get a response when something is said, and I kind of get this cringe feeling, I feel I need to address it. So, first, I'm saying that when we have these meetings, there needs to be civility. When a citizen stands up to make a comment and instead asks a question, the proper response should be, "Citizen, we're only taking comments at this time," or something to that effect. Silence or staring is not becoming of any council member. And on the video, it looked embarrassing. Now, as far as the P&amp;Z workshops, that was, the name "workshop" seemed more like it was a guise. These were actual meetings. And I'll quote, and I paraphrase. Sylvia once said, "The code was created under the guise of walkability." Well, I contend that the P&amp;Z meetings were a guise as a workshop, and they were actually meetings because things were voted on. In the public sector, a workshop is intended for people to come together, to collaborate, brainstorm, and give input. The information and suggestions that emerge from a workshop are then fine-tuned and presented back to the group for consensus. The meetings on February 17th and 24th were in no way, shape, form workshops. Citizens were given the illusion of input by making citizen comments under three minutes. There was no discussion, collaboration, and, most importantly, dialogue, just comments. Our city council was taking a sledgehammer rather than a scalpel to the Bastrop building code, and without questions as to the why. The pros and cons have not been laid out for the citizens to minimally understand what these amendments mean and how the changes will affect our city. Wanting to completely abolish the entire code is ignorant and irresponsible. It shows lack of thought and care of what the citizens of Bastrop want. If the voiced concerns of the residents are not going to be heard and ignored, then why bother? Then again, these were meetings and not workshops.
Mr. Leibowitz?
Tom Leibowitz, 1501 Hill Street. Counsel, tonight is the first time that our project, the North End Prairie, has ever been on your agenda. With it being listed in the city manager's report tonight, we wanted to tell you and the public a little bit about it. First, we've been working on this project for three and a half years, starting in August 2021, when we purchased the property nestled in the North End between Pecan and Hill Streets, south of Linden from Joe Reddy Tuck. He had a plan to develop the property that he'd discussed with neighboring homeowners and city staff before we ever brought the land. My sister-in-law, now Councilwoman Foster, informed us of the use of the local housing needs, sorry, informed us of the local housing needs that she'd heard in community buildings and the calls she's received from real estate agents. We listened to what she had to say about the gaps in the local housing market and designed housing to meet those unmet needs. Back in August of '21 through August of '22, we spent a year working with engineers, planners, and architects to develop and design opportunities for home ownership in Bastrop for households with limited income. Two and a half years ago, August 2022, we submitted our neighborhood regulating plan, the first step in getting city staff approval for a project like this that meets the codes and therefore does not need zoning changes from city council. Two years ago, city staff approved our neighborhood regulating plan. In May 2024, almost a year ago, we submitted our preliminary drainage plan, and in August of '24, staff approved that drainage plan. It's at that point that we started to talk with property owners now that we had the difficult issues of the drainage result. In December of 2024, three months ago, we submitted our preliminary plan to city staff to review. We've addressed all the changes that staff asked us to make, and we're awaiting their feedback. Just this month, we submitted our grandfathering application to continue developing under the codes we've been working under for three and a half years. Texas law says that when a city changes the development code midstream, a project can continue under the codes that were in place when the project started. Second, I'd like to talk about drainage. City staff approved our preliminary drainage plan in August of 2024. This means that the engineers and planning staff have agreed on this plan, which includes an onsite water retention pond and underground stormwater pipes. The new drainage infrastructure will provide better protection for every level of storm than the site does currently. We note that the city's detention pond across the street had bad flooding a few years ago, and the city has deepened that pond. This should really help. We've asked around, and the city seem, no one in the area seems to have flooded since the city deepened its pond. But again, our new detention pond and our new infrastructure will make it better for every type of storm. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leibowitz. Ms. Jody Smith?
Good evening, council members. Jody Smith, 1501 Hill Street. To continue telling some of the story that Tom just started mentioning, I'd like to talk about our mission, our mission, sorry. So, from the beginning, this has been a mission-driven project for us. We formed a nonprofit organization, the Homes for Good Foundation, that will carry this work forward. The website is homesforgood.care, if you'd like to look at it. We're also developing partnerships and collaborations with other nonprofit organizations with similar missions. However, we still hear people say that this project is all about making us rich. I'll tell you plainly that it is not. We both have good jobs at which we earn enough money, and we don't need to earn more. So, we are giving lots of money to this project, not receiving any money from it. If we had wanted to make a lot of money developing this land, then we probably would have divided the four acres into eight half-acre lots, put in utilities, and sold those to people who wanted to build big houses on them. And that would have been a quick, easy way for us to make money. But it also would have gentrified the neighborhood and driven up property values and probably pushed out some of the longer-time residents who couldn't afford that higher property tax burden. And that's the opposite of why we're doing this, which is to expand home ownership for more limited-income households in Bastrop. Fourth, about housing affordability. So, we are learning that apparently, in the past, some developers here have thrown around the word "affordable" but didn't actually have a plan behind that. That is not us. We do have a plan and the nonprofit organization to implement that plan. So, we are learning from Homebase, which is a nonprofit affordable housing partner associated with Austin Habitat for Humanity. And we are in talks with them about expanding their presence into Bastrop County. Their model provides home buyers, home buyer readiness programs and credit repair, along with connections to banks that lend at preferred terms, including lower interest rates and no requirement for private mortgage insurance, or PMI, on the loan for qualified buyers. And their model is available for people making up to 80% of area median income, which is up to $68,500 for a household of one, $97,800 for a household of four. That means BISD teachers, whose average salary is $60,000, could be eligible to participate. We'll also put in place limitations to keep this a predominantly owner-occupied neighborhood. Bastrop was affordable, and housing here was affordable for a long time, but the changes over the past five to 10 years have made it hard for people who grew up here to buy a home and hard for many Bastropians to help their family members or their small-business employees find housing here. Now is the time for a public conversation and also a public strategy for local housing affordability. The Bastrop County Health Department is leading such a conversation right now with support from the St. David's Foundation, and we hope the city will participate fully in that. Thank you so much for your public service.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Josiah Ingles?
Thank you. For those of you that don't know who I am, I am the Executive Director of Camp Haven Sanctuary, one of the homeless shelters that serves not only Bastrop city government, but also the county.
Can you give us your address, please?
549 Mesquite Drive, Cedar Creek, Texas.
Thank you, go ahead.
So, I wanted to address primarily, there was a lady that recently came to our shelter, and she had been staying in the at the tractor supply parking lot for a year. And multiple, multiple times EMS had to be called for her because she is on oxygen, and she needed a place to plug in for her oxygen condenser. But yet, no one told her about our shelter, and our shelter has been here for four years. So, we would like to work with you to work with your first responders, for they all have our information, for they can refer people to us much sooner than a year, especially when it is a critical life-or-death situation. This lady needed electricity for her oxygen machine. And so, fortunately, she's at our shelter now. And so, if you would permit, I would like to leave some contact information and some information about our shelter with you, for each one of you and your city manager and your heads of your first responder departments. And secondly, I would like to ask for your collaboration and your input on a HMIS system that stands for Homeless Management Information System, and it is a federal standard, which is required by the federal government for any organization that is getting federal funds for housing. Travis County has theirs, and we're trying to develop one for Bastrop County. And we would like to know, how can we make it, as we're developing it, to better serve your city government? This type of system is the reason why millions of dollars from the federal government goes to Travis County for homelessness because it tracks outcomes across organizations. And so, we would like to work with you. What are your needs? How can this be developed to better assist your city government and your various departments as we move forward with the programmers to make it? And so, if you would permit, I'd like to leave my contact information and information about my shelter with your city manager. Is that okay?
Yes, please do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingles. Ms. Heather Green?
Hello again. Heather Green, I live at 2007 Pecan Street. Good evening, council members and city manager Sylvia. Good evening, council members and city manager Sylvia. I first want to thank you for your time and for the work that you do to guide Bastrop's growth. I understand that development is necessary, but it should be done fairly transparently and in the best interest of the community. Unfortunately, that has not been the case with the North End Prairie development. I just want to make a comment that all of the information that I just heard was more than I've ever heard in the years and years that they say that they've been planning this development. At the last meeting, council member Carrie Fossler stated that her sister Jody Smith would not financially benefit from this project. However, the nonprofit under which this development is listed provides only a vague mission statement and a contact page, no financial details, no long-term plans, and no transparency. Meanwhile, Fossler is a real estate agent herself, which raises concerns about whether this project is truly about housing affordability or if interests or other interests are at play. Beyond that, I have serious concerns about the way that this development has been handled with existing residents. Oops, sorry. When questions were raised about why neighbors weren't informed about this project, Smith indicated in not-so-many words that the current code requires her not to do so or does not require her to do so. That may technically be accurate, but ethically, those of us affected deserve a conversation long before this project moves forward. Additionally, Smith mentioned that she had spoken with my neighbors across the street. However, I later learned that she did not attempt to contact them until approximately 72 hours before this meeting. When she did stop by, they had guests and could not talk at the time. That is not a meaningful conversation. That is a last-minute outreach at best. I'm not against development, but I am against the lack of transparency, dismissing concerns, and failing to engage the community. The residents of Bastrop deserve to understand why they are not properly informed about this development, why it appears to benefit those with direct connections to city leadership, and how this process can be trusted when key details have been unclear from the start. I know that many of you are committed to ensuring responsible development in Bastrop, and I truly appreciate your efforts to address this issue. I urge you to take these concerns seriously before moving forward with this project. Development should improve our community, not divide it. The people of Bastrop deserve honesty, transparency, and a seat at the table. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Ms. Larson, you have checked multiple boxes on wishing to speak on citizen comments and not wishing to speak on 9A through 9M. Are you wishing to speak for citizen comments? Okay, go ahead and come on up here, thing.
Melinda Larson, 1320 Farm Street, Bastrop, Texas. Councilmember Fossler ran on two campaign promises: transparency for the people and community first. There are three incidents that have happened in our city that Councilmember Fossler has direct connection to. Visit Bastrop. Where Councilman Fossler was the chairman of the board, Fossler turned her cheek to Visit Bastrop employees when they came directly to her to vent concerns and suspicions regarding Visit Bastrop business. The non-action of Fossler resulted in Visit Bastrop employees losing their jobs, the dismantling of Visit Bastrop, and a complete overhaul of Visit Bastrop, costing time and taxpayer dollars. Is this community first? Number two, very early on, council, Carrie Fossler sent out bulk email and flyers to citizens accusing three respected council members of secretly meeting, then blindsided them at a city council meeting with allegations. Is this transparency for everyone? In her own words, taken from her origin video posted on her Facebook page last week and referenced the North End Prairie, "It was my idea. I've known about it since conception." 2021, we found out tonight. Fossler stated she was in information chair, as it were, between citizens and a high-density development that her sister Jody Smith and brother-in-law are the developers of. Is this community first? In response to my next-door post titled "The Elephant in the Room Part III" regarding North End Prairie, after he watched the origin story video on our Facebook page, he stated, "As a real estate agent, you stating that people are..." Carrie Fossler stating that people are asking you, Councilman Fossler, for a small, affordable little place to live, and that you just didn't have the listing supply (for the demand). He goes on to say, "What?", with a huge...
It's very good to see you all here this evening. Really glad that you were able to make it.
I have no idea what that is.
...of this evening's proceedings.
It might be the church next door. Yep.
Thank you, God. I'm trying to figure out who that prayer's for, me or someone else? Amen.
We need to find a volume button, I think. Okay, we'll let you keep going for a moment.
I just have a few more seconds. Regarding North End Prairie, after he watched your origin story, which I'm sure a lot of people did, I posted it twice today. On your Facebook page, he stated, "The people are asking you, Councilman Fossler, for a small, affordable little place to live, and that you just didn't have the listing supply (for the demand)". He goes on to say, "What?", with a question mark. He continues with, "Your name recognition is all over this one." He's also a Realtor. The connection to family, "I saw the elephant, and this has the obnoxious smell of corruption. Citizens need to fight this one." Thank you.
Okay, so I believe I have gotten all of the citizens' comments. So now we're going to move on to item nine, the consent agenda. We're going to...
Mayor Protem, I'd like to pull items 9M, 9Q, and 9R.
Did you have other councilperson, Fossler? Okay, so we're going to pull items 9A through 9G. We have a number of citizens' comments for all of those items. We're also going to pull items 9M, 9Q, and 9R. So, and Ms. Fossler's going to recuse herself on 9L. So we need to pull that one separately as well. So... So we're going to read items 9H, 9I, 9J, 9K, 9N, as in Nancy. And then the remainder will be passed through the consent agenda, except for Q and R. And then we will take each one of those independently.
Item 9H, consider and act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-16, adopting the master fee schedule, repealing the Appendix A fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances, amending certain fees, and establishing costs and fees charged by the city of Bastrop, providing for a penalty for a violation of Chapter 1, Article 1.01, Section 1.01.009 of the City Code of Ordinances. Item 9I, consider and act on the second reading of ordinance 2025-08, updating and amending Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 10.02, entitled Impact Fees, amending impact fees for water and wastewater utilities and providing for an effective date. Item 9J, consider and act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-06, amending Chapter 15, Article 15.01, Cemeteries of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, and Appendix A fee schedule, Article A15.01, Fairview Cemetery, to reflect an increase in fees for the purchase of cemetery plots, barrel, open-close fees, and establishing a price for columbarium niches. Item 9K, consider and act on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-18, adopting a local property tax exemption for qualifying childcare facilities as defined by the Texas Tax Code 11.36, and amending Chapter 11 taxation of the Bastrop Code of Ordinances by adding Article 11.05, childcare facility exemption. Item 9N, consider and act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-31, authorizing the appointment of Caroline A. McClemon, JD, as presiding municipal judge of the city of Bastrop Municipal Court, and appointing said judge for a two-year term effective March 11, 2025, and move to include on the March 25, 2025 consent agenda for a second reading.
That's it. Thank you very much. So now, we will also be including in this motion items 9O, 9P, skipping Q and R, items 9S, 9T, and 9U.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion for Councilperson Lee, a second from Councilperson Plunkett. Any further discussion, council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, so the consent agenda has passed, as we have discussed. So now, we're going to go back to item 9A. Consider and act on the second reading of ordinance 2025-23, repealing the 2019 amendment to Chapter 5 of the Transportation Master Plan as attached in Exhibit A, replacing with the 2017 Chapter 5 of the Transportation Master Plan and amending as attached in Exhibit B. We don't need to go through the staff report again.
Do you want the PowerPoint?
I mean, you can certainly have it there just in case, but we're not...
Mayor Protem, these are all related to the same topic. Can you go through A, B, and C similarly?
Yeah, do you want to read all three, and then me do a quick overview on all three?
Well, let's see. We have comments on... Yeah, each individual one. So I want to skip the staff report and then just go to citizens' comments. So first, we have Melinda Larson, who has expressed that she does not wish to speak but supports items 9A through 9M. So I'll set that one aside. Cecilia Serna says she does wish to speak on item 9A, so Cecilia Serna.
Cecilia Serna, 1104 Hill Street. I wanted to point out that the Transportation Master Plan, if you look at the differences between the 2017 and the 2019 plans, there's, and I mentioned it one of the previous meetings, the 2019, or what we're going to go back to, does not reflect the changes and the growth of the streets that have happened since then. Like, if you look at Page 40 between the two, Exhibit A and Exhibit B, Blakely Lane's on there, and we keep talking about Blakely Lane and what a mess that was. That's a mess because the code wasn't followed. And yes, the book has pretty, pretty pictures, but those pictures are easy enough to follow, and had they been followed, Blakely would not be the mess it is today. It's also been said that the master plan, it's a mess. If you look also, look at 304 on the 2017. That street, that 304 is listed as a much smaller thoroughfare than it is in 2019. 2019 plan shows that it's a state highway. So just the fact that those have not been updated, we move forward to pass these, that right there should be enough for pause. If all of these items have not, or the streets at least are going to be growing, and we know the traffic is going to be increasing, just like Agnes, then we need to stop. I mean, we can't keep going and taking this sledgehammer going there. There are huge changes that are being made. I haven't seen a consultant or heard of a city planner or any representative with credentials in city planning or development. Flooding was also mentioned because of all these changes. And it was mentioned that a development was built in this drainage area. Well, ultimately, who approved those permits? Now, back when that moratorium was put in place, the result of that moratorium, and it was because the flood plans were being changed. It's irresponsible to go through and allow development if the flood plain or drainage areas or all that will be affected, and then somebody's going to build in there. Now, all of that, there were 114 applications and meetings at that time. 617 permits were submitted. And just to cut it short, all of this and the moratorium and having it been used prevented a house from unintentionally being built in the drainage area. Sylvia mentioned in a previous meeting that a house had been since then built in the drainage area. And I said, ultimately, who's the ownership for that? I thought we had permits that go through all of that. Also, you mentioned Homebase Code in all of this. Sylvia said that if you can see it, or if you don't see it, smell it, or hear it, then you can build it. Again, I've asked before, Mayor Protem, you asked, you did clarify and gave some clear definitions. I would just like another definition.
Yes, Serna, you have three minutes.
For Homebase Code. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Catherine and Larry Albers, who have said they do not wish to speak and support items 9A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H. And then Jared Haruska wishes to speak and supports item 9A through 9M.
Hello, council. My name's Jared Haruska. I live at 1105 Buttonwood Street. I made a slight mistake there. I think I meant more like 9A through 9G. Sorry about that. But I did want to speak in favor of these amendments. And I hear some in the community are asking, "What's the rush on this?" And as a refugee from Austin selling itself out, I moved here in 2019. The rush is a land rush, and it's coming fast. We all know Bastrop is going to grow. Let's grow with our heads screwed on straight and support agenda items 9A through 9G. Reminder, there is no do-over. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'd just love to applaud his refugee status. That statement says a lot.
Okay, council, we have item 9A, to repeal the 2019 amendment to Chapter 5 of the Transportation Master Plan. We have the report given by staff at our last council meeting that is available to the public at will. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, Councilperson Plunkett, motion a second from Councilperson Meyer. Is there any other discussion, council?
This is the one that I'm... This is the one that I give pause to. It's the only one I give pause to in this moment. So I'm... I am going to vote no for this, only because I think it warrants more conversation. The others bring a degree of protection that I know that people are asking for right now, and this one, that's, I just wanted to explain my vote on this one. I just wanted to explain my vote on this one.
Okay, Council. Call for a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
So we have three ayes and one nay from Councilperson Foster, and the motion passes. Now, we're going to move on to Item 9B. Consider an act on the second reading of Ordinance 2025-24, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, the Bastrop Building Code, B3 Code, by removing all references to the mandatory street network and the gridded street network and establishing standards and procedures as shown in Exhibit A. So similarly, Mr. Jared Haruska, would you like to speak again, or would you like to consider your input as finished? Stepped out. Cecilia Serna, you signed up to speak on Item 9B. That's all that we have on Item 9B. Again, we have the staff report in last council's meeting, available to everyone. If you wish to understand the discussion behind this item, this is to remove mandatory references to the gridded street network. Council, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilperson Meyer, a second from Councilperson Plunkett. Any other discussion, Council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay. This one passes three to one. Councilperson Foster declined. And we're going to move on to Item 9C. Consider an act on the second reading of Ordinance number 2025-25, amending the Code of Ordinances related to Chapter 14, the B3 Technical Manual, by removing all references to the mandatory street network and the gridded network as shown in Exhibit A. Cecilia Serna, you signed up for this one.
And after this one, you can pull the rest of them. It's kind of redundant, if you don't mind. So the gridded network, keep talking about it, bringing it up, and it's been said that it's very expensive. And then, the question was asked in one of the P&amp;Z meetings, well, what is the vision? The answer was not to bankrupt Bastrop. Well, that's not really an answer. That's not a vision. That's sarcasm. And again, you know, these meetings are so that we can have dialogue and come to consensus and do what's best for Bastrop. And the only thing I really wanted to bring to light is, there was a study done, the redundancy study. And in there, I mean, I had never read it, and these were consultants that the city hired. These are professionals, and it seems like all of that work was for naught. One of the things in the study that I thought was rather interesting is, they factored into the study, the city's budgeted costs along with projected service costs, unfunded infrastructure, to get a clearer picture of long-term fiscal situation. They looked at which parcels were revenue-positive, which ones cost more to serve, and which ones generate revenue. They talked about a revenue map, and it was listed in the study, as well as ROI on different properties. Now, after I read all that, I said, this sounds like something that was well thought out, and it was discussed and went over months, and it just seems, knowing that, if these... We don't pause for this. Like I said before, it just seems irresponsible to me and not really taking into mind how Bastrop really needs to grow.
Thank you, Ms. Serna. I think the thing that you're referring to is called smart towns, and I also have read those presentations, and our city manager has even written pieces that kind of debunked some of that. So it's not universally accepted as the truth. So, Council, we have Item 9C here in front of us. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Councilperson Meyer, a second for Councilperson Plunkett. Any other discussion, Council?
I do.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I remember when that report came out, that she was talking about with the parcels that were, you know, paying their own way. And if I remember correctly, I happen to own one of the few who supposedly does. And it had to do with the amount of... It looked like it had to do with the amount of ad valorem taxes that were collected per acre. And of course, I have a really tiny building downtown that, you know, has a pretty high value on it, and because of, you know, the retail that's done there at a restaurant. So, and when I saw that, and, you know, I look at the same report, and it shows Home Depot, and Lowe's, and HEB, and Walmart, you know, places that collect huge amounts of sales tax, Buc-E's, and really are responsible for a very large portion of the city's tax revenue. And I know exactly what tax revenue, or at least I can find out, exactly what the city takes in in sales tax from my small restaurant. And the idea that, which that's kind of what was espoused in this report, was, oh, we need to get rid of all those big boxes, and everything needs to be in this little grid, because, you know, we can pay for, you know, the 18 feet or 25 feet of street, you know, a lot easier with the two very high-value properties that are on either side of it. Well, yeah, but that does not... I think anybody with a modicum of common sense would realize that that doesn't begin to show what it costs to, you know, I don't have parking. I have to deal with, I have to have city-provided parking behind the buildings downtown. Who pays for that? City does. This is not this utopic idea that, oh, if we build it dense and put sidewalks in front and don't let any, you know, big retailers come to town, it will, you know, will somehow have this community that everybody will be sitting out on their front porch and talking to their neighbors and singing kumbaya. That's not where we live. I mean, come on. So I just wanted to talk about that. Thank you.
Any other comments, Council?
Mayor Protem, I will. I'll piggyback on Councilmember Plunkett's piece and your piece. Thank you. I did publish articles. I have published articles. I am. I publish articles for Texas City Managers. I've led national APA conferences on these very topics. So I would say I'm pretty well-versed. And as I told Councilmember Foster at the last meeting, when we talked about grid streets, there's more than the value of the street itself. There's the emotion that it evokes, and you can't put a price tag on emotion. There are things in this code that when... The code says fiscally sustainable, and that's fiscally sustainable for the city, not the residents. That means pack it deep and collect as much taxes as you can for it. New urbanism is compact development. Go look it up. It's not a new theory. It is something that we are facing that is opposite of historic Bastrop, absolutely opposite. Those two things are incongruous with one another. So when we talk about mandatory, my goodness, we had a fight about dog chips being mandatory. Did we not? And the residents couldn't stand it. We had comments about, we need to have a public hearing for the dog chips, but we won't let the residents of North End Prairie have a public meeting. What are we doing? We can't keep doing this. Let's get it over with. Let's get to fixing them. They've asked, and asked, and asked. Let's get to fixing them.
Council, we have a motion on the table.
Just one, please, of discussion.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. So I would like to ask you, please, to have a public hearing for the people on the North End Prairie.
That's not the item on... I hear you, but that's not the item.
Well, since you brought that up, I just wanted to make sure I got that in there. So I can say that at the end of all the consent agenda and direct you then. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second on the table. We had some discussion. Any other discussion, Council? Okay, we're on Item 9C, approval of the item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes three to one. Carrie Foster, the lone naysayer. We're going to move on to Item 9D. Consider an act on the second reading of Ordinance 2025-26, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, by removing duplexes as an allowable building type in P2 and P3. So we have the discussion, and then you made changes based upon the discussion at the last meeting.
We did. This item is to get traditional family, single-family neighborhoods back to traditional single-family. And right now, we're on a form-based code, so it's very difficult when you're mixing uses with form. You want to talk about conflating issues and trying to solve a problem, you can't even figure out where the problem starts in this code, but you see the results all along. The Planning Commission recommended that we create a conditional use permit that would allow duplexes in the P3 through a process. As I mentioned in our last meeting, that becomes very difficult because it's not a use that you're allowing, it's a structure. Once the structure is already there, it's going to be very difficult to take it down. So staff's recommendation is to not allow duplexes in the B3, P3, sorry, in the P3 zone.
So we took this item up last time. We have a motion to approve at that meeting that passed, and then that included removal of duplexes as an allowable building type in P2 and P3. That's what's before us here today. Council, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilperson Meyer and Councilperson Plunkett. Any other discussion, Council? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is 9E. Consider an act on the second reading of Ordinance number 2025-22, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, build-to-line standards in P2 and P3, and adopting a first-layer setback in P2 and P3. So go ahead and show us the new things that are different from the last meeting.
Sure. I had put this slide in at the last meeting also. Not sure. We've got a bit of delay between updates here. To those folks to say why we're rushing and why we're making the changes, these are the B3 adoptions. These are how many workshops you had. This is how many readings you had. You had one reading at P&amp;Z. One. And then you had your standard two readings at City Council.
And do you have any idea how many changes were made during any of those meetings?
Zero.
That's what I thought. And how many changes have we had in the meetings at P&amp;Z, on Council? It's been numerous from what I've been able to count.
Many, many, many.
Yes. Thank you.
We're beyond double digits. We're into double digits. So the setback lines, the goal is to continue to match the built environment, to give the residents some consistency and some predictability about what's being built around them. So we had a lot of conversation about, what if there's nothing there? And what it, you know, where are the lines? And where do things start? And the reality is, you're never going to get a perfect answer. Some property lines are sold to the middle of the street. There are other properties that are sold right to the property line. It's just, it depends on who was the survey, or it depends on whether the city was allowing things be simple. Was it an easement? Was it not? The best thing is, what's around you, exactly. You measure what's around you. Her right-of-way line may start further than the other. We'll get into splitting hairs. You should just match the built environment. This is example of Jefferson. This is a house that has gotten through. It is going to be very, very close to the street. This is what that house should eventually look like. Looks like a wonderful house. It's just going to be obstructing the view of everybody else. You're going to walk out and you're on your porch, and you're going to see halfway through this house. This is another example of MLK. This is, this is multiple examples, though. This is like the mandatory sidewalk. That's the only house that has a sidewalk there. We'd have been better off creating a path for that money to be put into perhaps completing the sidewalk on the other side where the school kids are actually using it. This house, you can see, is setback really close to the road, as is in the B3, and the houses around it are setback further.
Can we, can we fast-forward to the section with the changes?
Yes.
Here we go.
So first-layer setback, match the built environment, two lots on either side of you, plus or minus five feet.
And so the change from last time is the...
We didn't change anything. There was a recommendation that we go back and figure out how we calculate that setback.
Right. So there was a, there is a change on this page where it says it's...
Oh, the developed and undeveloped.
Only applicable to undeveloped lots, and then it defined undeveloped lots, meaning those that are on raw land.
Correct.
And so that change was meant to kind of pull in our discussion and a couple of other sections that were just modified there rather than modified in other places to consolidate and centralize. So I wanted to point that out, since that's...
Sure, thank you.
This is the, this, that is the thing that is new this time around compared to last time, is, is the only applicable to undeveloped lots. That sentence is the, is the new thing, and why I wanted to show this publicly. Okay, Council, do we have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
I'm not done. I've got questions.
Okay, go ahead, ask a question.
Thank you. For the minimum lot size chart there, under minimum lot size, under P2, it has point, it has one acres. Do we want the S on acres? I know it's just a little...
That's the next item. Minimum lot size is the next item.
Okay. It uses the same chart for each one.
Yes.
Okay. And do we want any note about measuring on here at all, or just leave it to staff to figure it out? Okay. I'm good with it then. Thanks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve from Councilperson Meyer, and motion to approve from Councilperson Plunkett, whose voice cracked strangely. Any other discussion, Council? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero. Next item is 9F. Says, consider an act on the second reading of Ordinance 2025-21, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, minimum lot sizes in P2 and P3. This item, we did not make any changes last time, and so all of the discussion last time, staff report and questions still stand. Council, do you have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Councilperson Meyer, a second from Councilperson Plunkett. Is there any council discussion on this item?
Yes. Can we just check the S on the...
We'll do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, well, I think it just arrived. Yes, in fact, it did. So, Mr. Tom Liebowitz.
Thank you. Tom Liebowitz, 1501 Hill Street. So I want to talk about this one, and I want to talk about the duplexes and the setbacks, and not for our project. I mean, our project is grandfathered. This is much more general around affordability. So when I was in the Bay Area, I was on the United Way as a Board of Directors, and I was on their Public Policy Committee, and I focused on housing. And we had a saying there, and that saying was, if you don't build it, they will still come. So we've got refugees here from Austin, we've got people from all over, and everything that we've talked about, these last three items, is going to do nothing but increase the costs of housing, because it's going to reduce the number of houses available, and supply and demand works in the housing market as well as it works in anything else. When we discussed this in P&amp;Z a few weeks back, I walked through the houses that are available in the downtown area that are a third of an acre or more. I didn't talk about the lots available. Anybody know why? Anybody know why I didn't talk about the lots that are a third of an acre available? Because there aren't any. There are, however, eight houses. One of them is $300,000, which is a bargain, except when you see, this is 1301 St. Hill Street, that it has a building that's collapsed on the property. that it has a building that's collapsed on the property. Then we actually have one that's six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars at eighteen oh nine Wilson, and it actually seems like a pretty fair price, six hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for twenty-five hundred square feet. It's two hundred fifty dollars a square foot for a nice house. That's not bad, but for most people in Bastrop, it's probably not affordable. Next, we have an eight hundred fifty thousand dollar duplex, which many people will say, isn't all that affordable. Maybe you can buy half for four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, but it's a duplex, which will soon not be permitted. And then everything, everything exceeds a million dollars. One point one five million dollars, one point three nine million dollars, one point one four million, one point nine million dollars. That's going to become the norm in downtown. If the goal behind these changes is to completely prohibit building downtown, then you will have succeeded in doing so by making these changes. If people are concerned about housing affordability in Bastrop, this is going the opposite direction. It is simple math. I have advanced math degrees, but I don't need them to know this stuff. It's all pretty simple and straightforward. So again, not about my project. Our project is about increasing affordability. This is about the rule changes that are being made going forward, which will make this town completely unaffordable.
So Mayor, I'd like to address that because the goal is to not do a bunch of infill development in the downtown. The infrastructure there simply cannot sustain it. We've talked about the drainage over and over and over again. Their project in the Hundred Year Flood is two-foot of inundation. The, the infrastructure simply cannot sustain it. So is the goal to reduce the number of density downtown? Absolutely, for the protection of the residents. There are multiple other places around the city of Bastrop where smaller lot sizes may be the thing to do, and you do that through a planned development district. There are tools. So to use the fear factor that we're driving away affordable housing, that is simply an untrue statement.
I do have a comment to that because in the last few council meetings, though, you've, I feel like you have pretty much said there will be no affordable housing. You've said it in various ways. And yeah, you said, you said, for those of you that want affordable housing, let's, let's be real, there's, there's no more affordable housing. You said that in about three meetings, and I wondered why you were saying that? Because I, we should have affordable housing in the downtown area. And I've asked, you know, I've said this many, many times, where does that go? There are places where we can put some affordable housing in, in the Bastrop proper, but we haven't identified where those places are. I don't know. I have felt kind of like you were leaning towards, no, there's no, there's not going to be any affordable housing, just from some comments that you made that maybe came out the wrong way. But why can't there be affordable housing in the downtown area somewhere if we locate where that goes?
So first, I'm going to tell you that, no, you misunderstood because what we've talked about is what is the definition of affordable. We've talked about that as it related to your son. We talked about that as it related to per capita income. We talked about that as it related to a variety of things about what is actually affordable. And what is defined as affordable here with our median income is not affordable to many of the people in this audience. The goal would be to protect what they have. This is generational housing, and that's all along Bastrop proper, all along Bastrop proper. Where does it make sense where the infrastructure can sustain it? There may be lots on Mesquite. There may be lots on Main. But the neighbors who have lived there for so long should have some consistency about what's going to be built there. And the rest of the town shouldn't have to foot the bill for the infrastructure that's going to be needed to make it happen. Development, just as a rule, is expensive, and that's why folks try to go to the inner parts of the city because they believe infrastructure is already there. It should be okay. Often, that infrastructure has aged and it's not sustainable. And it's probably on a lot of capital improvement plans as to have upgrades and changing out clay pipe, for example, or changing out galvanized pipe, as we sent out the notices about who had galvanized. So from an affordability standpoint, where it goes, I don't know. Is there tools in the toolbox with planned development districts to make it happen? Sure, there is. But force-feeding it probably is not the answer.
I don't, I don't disagree with that at, at all, but it wasn't coming out that way and some residents even made comment that were watching. It was like, it was like you were saying, stop talking about affordable housing. And I'm, I'm paraphrasing it, but it, it did come off that way. And unfortunately, I'm very concerned about affordable housing. We are getting priced out. People are getting priced out of not just Bastrop proper, but the city in general. And I've, since I've been on council, been trying to get the city to take a look at how we can provide affordable housing. So it absolutely should be a conversation that we need to start addressing because as more people come in and somebody made a point about housing going up and that's going to increase the cost, the reality is Lenar Homes or KB Homes could have bought that property and built three hundred thousand dollar homes on that property because it's coded for that. It's also, whether or not we pass the duplex or not, they wouldn't have been able to put duplexes on there, but they still could have put three hundred thousand dollar homes on there. So where, where are we? That's my concern. Where are we or when are we going to get to the point where we're going to start addressing where we can put affordable housing? Whether that be tiny homes, duplexes, some cities have zoning where you can only put manufactured homes in this little corner of the city. I feel like we need to start having that conversation sooner rather than later.
So Councilmember Lee, I'll remind you, you guys are the policymakers and you direct me to do it. I haven't had a specific directive. I also remind you, BEDC has been around for some time and is also, could have also contributed to affordable housing. They haven't done it. I don't know if you've sponsored any items to bring forward affordable housing, but I'm happy to have a subcommittee. The county's doing it under, there's a group trying to attack through a grant from St. David's, and we have staff on that to lend expertise to that. But I have not had, other than the senior housing facility, I've not had one housing development come and say, we want to build an affordable housing community in Bastrop.
But it's not always about them coming to us because there's a lot of programs out there. There's a lot of state funding. There's, there's programs that we can get into that would help bring it here. We have to sometimes have that conversation for it to start. And I have said to you multiple, I, I can't tell you how many times I've talked, you and I have had many conversations about affordable housing. Up here, but that's where you go to. You go to, I haven't had a directive by the council. But I've mentioned it, how many meetings have I talked about affordable housing?
I know, you and I know me regularly.
If I can't get them to say, yeah, we need it, what can I do?
So, uh...
So I'm asking now, can we have a conversation about affordable housing?
Let's get back to our agenda item. Thank you. On the item nine F, on the amending the minimum lot sizes in P two and P three. We had a motion, but I'm going to take that off the table because we hadn't done citizens' comments. So now I will open the floor for a motion again.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from counselperson Meyer and a second from counselperson Plunkett. Any other discussion, counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Move on to item nine G, consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter ten subdivisions by enacting Article ten oh one, titled Parkland Dedication and Park Enrichment Fund, Sections ten oh one, oh oh one through ten oh one, oh one four. And Viviana, there's nothing different or changed, correct?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, thank you. So counsel, do we have a motion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve from counselperson Meyer, a second from counselperson Plunkett.
Aye.
Go ahead. Any discussion?
Yes, I had a question. Let's see, on the last page of it, the five of five, it says, review, okay, section, okay, line one seventy-one. Thank you for the line items. Yeah. For that section, the review of dedication requirements, it says the city council shall review the fees set forth in this section only. The city council shall take into account inflation as it affects land and park development costs as well as the city's targeted level of service for parkland. Should we put a frequency in there so we come back to it every year or whatever, but just program the frequency that we revisit it?
Um, that is up to your pleasure.
I think that would be great because we've forgotten to revisit things before. If it, if we are, if it is supposed to be on our radar as, as inflation affects, yeah, if we're supposed to be keeping track of inflation, then I think we should frequent it once a year.
So you're required to review the master fee schedule once a year. It's part of the budget. Do you want it more than that?
And this will be, and this is in the master fee schedule?
Yes, so all fees are then eventually referenced in the master fee.
That's good enough for me. I just want to make sure. We have eyes on it. Yeah.
Yes. This, the language specifically, though, is so that you guys are responsible for helping set this fee.
Right.
Whereas some of the other fees that are in our master fee schedule aren't necessarily the, they're set by different metrics and/or methodology. So it's just identifying that clearly.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other discussion, counsel?
So don't forget.
Okay, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously, four to zero. We're going to move on to item nine M. Consider an act on the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty, amending Section one oh four oh two, membership terms of the Code of Ordinances to remove any elected official from appointed boards or commissions when their term ends either by election or resignation.
Do you want me to go over this again?
No, thank you. So do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from counselperson Meyer, second from counselperson Plunkett. Any other discussion?
Who pulled it?
Counselperson Lee.
I pulled it. I'm just waiting for the vote.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
No.
Motion passes three to one. The lone is counselperson Lee. Okay. Then we're going to go to nine Q, consider an act on Resolution R twenty twenty-five dash seventeen regarding an amendment to the Master CCN Transfer Agreement between the City of Bastrop and Aqua Water Supply Corporation for the transfer of the Aqua Water Supply Corporation CCN to the City of Bastrop for the Valverde development. So this is nine Q. Madam City Manager, would you please present on this item?
Sure. So the city issued a will-serve letter to Valverde in twenty twenty and subsequently entered into a development agreement in twenty twenty-one. However, the city did not resolve its Aqua CCN transfer during that time period. And so the city has incurred responsibility for completing the transfer of that CCN. So Valverde has annexed into the city the first portion. The agreement was never finalized. So we owe Aqua eighty-two hundred dollars per acre to serve the development. Counsel directed staff to work it out, and so this is the final agreement before the payment.
Any questions, counsel?
Yes, I have, I had a question because it didn't say how it was going to be funded. The packet didn't say how it was going to be funded.
It was several council meetings ago, the council approved a thirty-five million dollar or so debt borrow to complete the Sims Borough and several other projects. It was in that debt payment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from counselperson Plunkett, a second from counselperson Meyer. Any other discussion, counsel? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero. Nine R, consider an act on Resolution number R twenty twenty-five dash sixty-two, approving a public improvement plan agreement with PRC zero one, Bastrop LLC for Cinderella Phase One is attached in Exhibit A. Mr. Rosales.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protim, counsel. So this is for Public Improvement Plan Agreement. We already approved the public plan agreement, or the PIPA, with Cinderella for the first round. They came back and they made adjustments and only platted a smaller portion. So this is amending, and if you look at the resolution, it's revoking the previously approved PIPA and moving it to this phase, and then they'll bring three other subsequent phases later on at this time. Any questions? It's just bringing the, it's the same, they have the same approved plans. It's just bringing it down, narrowing the scope, and they're only doing this first phase. So we have to amend the PIPA to match and the fees to match that phase. Any questions?
Yeah, I did have a question because I was looking over the fees and the first one didn't have any street improvements, but the others did. So I was wondering why that was.
That this one doesn't? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah, because all of their streets are private.
Oh.
There won't be any streets in this phase. This phase is for underground utilities only.
Okay, thank you.
And so you'll see probably Phase three or four, Moat Way will come in and then they'll do a public improvement, an agreement for that phase, and that will have street improvements in it. Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Say it.
Motion from counselperson Plunkett, a second from counselperson Meyer. Any other discussion, counsel? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero. Now we are going to go back to item nine L, where counselperson Foster has asked to recuse herself. Consider an act on the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifteen, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter one, General Provisions, Article one dot twenty, Uniformity of Requirements, amending Section one twenty zero one five, Appeal of Board of Adjustment to Appeal of City Council, amending subsection A and C, removing subsection B and D. This is the second reading. There's no changes in this item, counsel. We had discussion and a presentation from staff at the last council meeting. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from counselperson Meyer, a second from counselperson Plunkett. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes three to zero with counselperson Foster recusing herself. We have now completed all of the items on the consent agenda.
Could I ask a question, please, Mayor Protim?
Certainly.
Uh, City Manager, when would you like, is now when you would like a directive, before we go to individual considerations? Is now when you would like it, Mayor Protim?
If you would like one, that would work just fine.
I do because since we were so concerned about having a, a public meeting on dog chipping, I think it's only fair that we have a public meeting on the North End Prairie. So I would direct, please, to schedule that.
Motion.
Make a motion to schedule that.
Put it on a future agenda.
I'll second.
This is not on the agenda.
I know it's not, but all we're doing is direction to schedule an item on an agenda in the future, which we can discuss based upon even things that are on...
You can give direction, absolutely.
Yes, so that's exclusively the, the nature of it, correct?
There's no need to vote, though.
Okay, cool. Thank you, City Manager.
That works. Got it.
I, since we're doing this, I forgot to ask you during the City Manager's report, I wanted an update on the comprehensive plan because we haven't talked about where half is on that in a minute. And also an update on the erosion problem at Picom Park. Thank you.
Okay, so we're now going to move on to items for individual consideration. We've already done items ten A and B with the swearing in of our new judge. So now we're on item ten B, consider an act on Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fifty-six, approving the Bastrop Public Library Public Information Policy submitted by Bonnie Pearson, Library Director.
Good evening, counsel. All right, so before you is our public information policy. This is actually a new policy where we combined three of our old policies to make it into one clear and unified, consistent approach to sharing information. So in your packet, you've got lots of stuff because I was trying to show you where we took all the pieces for this new policy from the old policies. So I know you had a lot of information. I understand it's confusing. So we decided to put in the key improvements. We're eliminating redundancy, simplifying the language, removing procedures, and we are enhancing the efficiency for information sharing. So the parts of this policy are public viewing documents. This is a new section. We receive public viewing documents... We receive public viewing documents pretty regularly from different government entities so that they are available for the public. A lot of times they just arrive and we don't know how long we're supposed to keep them. So we have developed this policy. There is now a form that they must fill out in order for us to put them out. And then it also gives us a time limit when we can destroy the documents.
Do you have some way of posting to the public that those are available?
The government entity posts that. We are just a site. They get it to us, and they say, go to your public library and look for the document.
Got it.
Our second portion of this is for our bulletin boards. We've had this policy before. Most of it's the same. We changed the way we're defining the size and the shape. And it also adds that we can refuse to post something if it doesn't meet our requirements. Our social media policy was pretty long. This section also retains most of the information from the original policy. We did add some new statements about the intent of interactions, post retention, and permission for reuse. That means if you post on our social media pages, we can use your comment for something else. Usually what it is, we take the positive comment, and we might put it in a newsletter or in the library board packet, or we would use it in some sort of publicity. That's what we mostly use comments on our social media for.
Bonnie, quick question?
Yes.
So we have had, on the city's Facebook page, we've had people posting links. Sometimes it's a link to a known site, sometimes it's a link to, you know, please contact Mrs. so-and-so, she can help you get your husband back, just weird links. And so we've been talking to legal about those links being automatically hidden. Is that in your policy?
Yes, we do that. Yes, we already do that. We do, we do retain those links. So if anybody says, hey, we put that up there, we do retain it.
From a retention, yes, but it's hidden from...
But it is hidden from the public.
Because it's spam.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Okay, and so I believe the other thing that we did for social media before in the old policy, we listed what platforms that we would post on, and we decided that that was a bad idea because social media changes. So we took that out. And that's it. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple questions. Let's see here. On the refusal to post policy, has legal reviewed that?
Yes.
And, okay, good, because it's going to be...
Legal has reviewed this policy. It's been, it's been approved by the library board. It has also been to legal, and they did not find any problem with any of the language that we had.
Excellent. Yeah, this is going to look somewhat like a public square when we create something like this that people can post. And so there's going to be very, very broad First Amendment protections for what's posted there. And so just if legal's said okay, then I'm fine with it. The second thing is, I had an impression that might not even be accurate while reading the packet, that there was some discussion perhaps about an electronic bulletin board. Do we have anything like that provided on the library website?
We do not have an electronic bulletin.
Okay, I was going to caution against it if we could, so...
Yes, we do not have that.
Perfect. You beat me to it. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Councilperson Plunkett to approve, a second from Councilperson Foster. Any other discussion, counsel?
I just wanted to say thank you so much, Bonnie, for your hard work and the great job you're doing.
Thank you so much. I cannot take all the credit. I have a terrific staff. If you have not been to the library to meet them all, I encourage you to come and say hello. They are amazing, and they make me look good.
Excellent. So we have a motion and a second, counsel. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Motion passes unanimously four to zero. Now we're going to move on to item 10C. This one was tabled on March 4th. Says, conduct a public hearing. Consider an act on the first reading of ordinance 2025-28, amending the master fee schedule for tree mitigation fees and amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter One, General Provisions, adding Section 11305, Trees on Private Property, amending the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Section 6304, Protected Inheritage Trees, adding subsection J, Administrative Decision Establishing Fees and the Penalty for Violation, and move to include on the March 25th, 2025, consent agenda for the second reading. And for this item, Mr. Cowie.
Good evening, James Guy Development Services. Basically, again, this is the process of trying to protect our trees. There's some key points we want to cover. One is the mitigation fee or fee established per caliber inch. The process is if you don't comply with the fee, and really we want to address the citizen's concern of the rights of the private property on their requirements. Basically, the bullet point here, and as I go through, I address the bullet points on different things. So basically, an individual who does not comply with the requirements, his fee caliber inch will be doubled. Mitigation fees, again, were regulated by the local government code. This is what this is referenced in here, 212905. If it's located on a private property, one or two family, and it's a person's residence, and it's less than 10 inches diameter at the point on the trunk, about four foot, point, 4.5 feet above the ground. So again, addressing the citizen's concern that wants to take out a tree on their property, but it's a one- and two-family dwelling, their residence, and it's less than that size, that's one option to get out or not be followed process. This is the process for mitigation. The city manager is going to work with the parks and rector actor and city staff and development staff. We're going to set up a procedure for, through a permit process. Upon inspection, and there may be a change in the staff report, I think we had a five-inch, five-foot at four, instead of five feet, it should be 4.5 feet of ground, shall be required the fee of four per caliber inch. Again, repeating per the local government code, this fee should not be assessed to a residence if it's a one- and two-family dwelling and less than 10 inches diameter. Again, the goal is to save those trees, and where we can't save them is replace them with more trees based on inch per inch. The tree shall be from approval list and shall be the same number of caliber inches removed from the site. And then going back to the penalty, we have to allow by the local government code replacement of trees. So if they didn't follow the process, the inches are doubled, the replacement tree inches also have to be doubled. F was again the concern of citizens, if I have a tree that's affecting the foundation of my house, it's diseased, decayed, their arborists or the city arborists can work with them, will go meet with them on site and agree the tree needs to come down for protection of the property owner. Again, now here we're back into the penalty portion of it. If, you know, individuals don't follow the process, there'll be double the mitigation fee and must meet the requirements of, again, double the inches, double the fee. And again, this is the actual court process. Any individual who removes a tree without a permit is not compliant with the mitigation requirements of this section referenced there, shall be subject to a 500 to 2,000 fine per tree, which each tree, being a separate offense, shall be charged with a misdemeanor offense. And then there's administrative relief, that any individual may request relief to any part of this section to the city manager. If the appeal is denied, the individual may appeal to the Tree Advisory Board, and decision this board shall be final. So again, I want to be sure mainly I covered the concerns of homeowners and if there's any questions of the council.
Questions?
Yes, please. For the homeowners, even though there may be no fee assessed, they still need to apply for a permit, correct? Okay, so everybody in any situation applies for a permit, and if you don't...
With trees, with trees that meet the requirement of the ordinance of your 10 inches or less...
Then there's no permit even required to, you're like automatically...
We need to try to work with this. There's always sections where you don't require to get a permit, but you still have ordinances to meet the requirements of. So we just, they just need a verified document when they, before they take that tree down, it's that size of tree.
Do they even need to initiate a conversation?
We recommend that. Somebody said they cut it down, it was a certain size. So again, ideally if it's a small tree, no, but if it's a substantial tree, it's always best to check with city staff.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure they're clear on that.
I have an item, but I think it's a discussion item more than a question item, so I'll hold off on it.
Mayor Protim, if I may, I don't have a question, but I just have a quick legal note. So on the recitals for the form ordinance, with regard to the penalty provision on the misdemeanor going from the presumptive 500 up to 2,000, we have looked at that a little bit closer, and we're going to recommend some additional verbiage in the recitals to cite public health authority and regulatory authority of the city. So we're going to draft that and send it in. It's just in addition to, to those recitals.
So we can do that on the second reading, then?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, that works. Okay, any other questions, counsel? Okay, so this item is a public hearing item, so I'm going to open the public hearing at 8:05 PM. Public hearing is now open. And no one's signed up. Anyone? Would you like to speak? Okay, come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and then as soon as you're done, go fill out the form with them, please. Can you make sure that microphone is turning, if it's a battery-powered microphone, it might need to be switched back on? Musical microphones.
Colton Sameyer at 227 Hoffman. So I just want to clarify, there's not, is there a permit fee to apply for a 10-inch tree that is dead? Let's say it's 12-inch dead tree. Am I going to have to pay to get your approval to tear that down?
No, sir, no, sir. So what we'll ask is that you call the city. We'll connect you with an arborist, either internal or a third party. Once the arborist says the tree's diseased, that's it. You, you get to do away with the tree. There's no...
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm not having to pay for each tree that I'm authorized to cut down.
Correct.
Okay, that's all.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, it's 8:06 PM. Closing the public hearing. It's motion time, counsel.
Motion to approve. Second.
So we have a motion to approve from Councilperson Meyer, a motion, a second from Councilperson Foster. So I'm going to add in my discussion item on this one. So can we go back to the, the item where the arborist says that it's a diseased tree? Yeah, here we go. If the city arborist or third party establishes that the tree must be removed for health, safety, protection from damage to surrounding property or structures, or other public safety reasons, the city manager shall have the authority to assess no mitigation fees. However, replacement trees in equal caliber inches must be replanted on the site. So I have a concern about the replanting of the trees or equal inches on the site. And specifically, there was a very, very large, massive, multi-hundred-year-old pecan tree on Robbie Sanders' property that was diseased and was rotting out from the inside out. And it was this big around. Asking her to plant one tree in replacement for that one tree absolutely makes sense. I wouldn't struggle with that. But asking her to plant 18 two-inch trees on her property to replace that one large tree feels excessive. And that's, that's kind of what I was thinking when I read that, is that specific case, because it was a big deal. Seeing that tree cut down, it was a, a major undertaking to do it safely, and a lot of lumber came out of it, and neighbors came and picked up big blocks of lumber to make stuff out of it. And, and so it was just something that left an imprint on me. But I, I'm, yeah, I'd hate to have to tell someone, you now have to plant 18 trees on your half-acre lot. That just doesn't feel like that makes sense.
Do you have a recommendation on, on what that should be? Should it be? I don't know. If it's, I don't, I don't know. There's all sorts of, we never plan for exceptions. We always plan for just the general rule.
Well, but, I mean, in this case, the general rule is if you cut down a tree and then you have to replace the same number of inches, it's your multiple, because you're using two-inch trees to replace them. You know, the smallest tree means you're going to have to plant five. And on, you know, half-acre lots, third-acre lots, it doesn't make sense to go plant five trees, especially if you're talking about like an oak tree. You want one big oak tree, not five small ones. So I, I'm just hesitant on the, the multiple trees planted to replace a tree when you take one down when it's, you know, a situation where the city arborist has said that that one's got to come down due to health and safety. You know, it's dying, it's dead, it's dropping branches. If it drops a branch in someone's head, it could kill them. You know, the tree's got to come down. No one disagrees. Then forcing the person to replace with, you know, a minimum of five new trees just feels excessive.
So my suggestion would be that there be a, it's an easy formula. If you're on a quarter-acre lot, then it's 25% of the calipers. If you're on a half-acre lot, it's 50% of the calipers, and so on and so forth. It's, I just remind everybody, we're a tree city, and the hope is that we, the hope is that we have as many trees everywhere.
Right, but I, I mean, I think the, the rule, I mean, not the exception, but the, if we're talking about a 10-inch tree, and you cut it down, and then you're going to replace it with two-inch trees, that means you have to plant five trees to replace it mandatory according to this rule unless you go ask for some exception from someone. So I think that's the rule we're talking about, and I think even that's excessive.
Yeah, and I would say that there won't even be room for those trees to grow to be the same size that the one that you replaced is. So can we not, in the case of a, a dead or dying tree, just replace it with the same species? Or, or one from the preferred species list, or I don't care. I mean, but to me, the idea would be you would want to create a place for that tree to grow back. Or, you know, a similar one or a better one. So, yeah, and I can think of some, you know, trees in my neighborhood, maybe even on my property, that, you know, it's going to die one day, and, you know, what are you going to do then? And I don't know where I would put all those trees. So, you know, from a practical standpoint.
So in the case of Ms. Sanders, how big was the tree?
Probably, this caliper, is it a diameter number? Okay, so maybe 36 inches?
Okay.
It's not circumference, it's diameter.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, and how big is her property?
Half-acre, maybe?
Okay, so how about 36 is 18? That's still nine trees to plant on the property. Is it, I don't know, we can, we can come back with a certain ratio. I guess the thing to think about, too, is when somebody's going to, let's say, expand their home, and they want to do an addition, and there's a tree in the way. Hopefully, we're going to have a replacement tree for the tree that they cut. I get it, it's probably not going to be that big, but let us come back with some ratios that may potentially work given that situation.
Yeah, well, and let me point out one other thing. Not too long ago, we had that giant tree in the park that died. Well, okay, I mean, would the city then be, because, I mean, that was, how big was that thing? It was...
Lord, I'm going to tell you that if you let Terry Moore, she has a group that was going to replace hundreds in the floodplain over in Piccon.
Yeah.
And we had to say, no, probably not a good idea in the floodplain. There are groups that do, I mean, she can, she can probably speak to it more. There are groups who, who would come in, but...
But, you know, to have the same kind of thing happen, you know, to a private, you know, individual, I mean, you would just get an ex, I can see easily, you know, several trees around town that I can think of off the top of my head that would require an, an excessive, really, amount of trees that you would have to plant to, and again, if it died of no fault, you know, of your own or anybody else's, it just, it reached its natural life, or it got struck by lightning, whatever, right?
Yeah, so is the recommendation to just replace a tree of the same species? Any particular caliber inch, four inch, four inches?
Well, I mean, don't we have a recommendation to use two-inch trees because those are...
Because they're easier to get.
Well, easier to get and then have a greater chance of survival, right? And, you know, two-inch trees become four-inch trees eventually if they're taken care of. I, I guess I'm kind of thinking it should just be a one-for-one replacement if there's a health and safety issue with the tree where the arborist has to remove it. But, I mean, I don't get to vote here. What do you guys think?
So are you talking just for residents or for developers as well? Are you talking just the homeowners?
On this, on this F...
Just homeowners? Okay.
On this item F that says that, you know, if the city arborist or third-party arborist establishes that it must be removed for, you know, health, safety, protection from damage to surrounding property or structures or other public safety reasons, that, and certainly we could give the city manager the ability to assess the trees as well, but I, it just, yeah, this one makes it mandatory.
Well, my recommendation would be if you're going to make those types of changes with no caliber for caliber, that you leave it just to the residents, just for the residential trees. That particular example that you gave, the prior slide... That particular example that you gave, the prior slide, James, prior slide. Sure, but I'd like to color within the lines, I'd like the lines to be a little clearer. So um, if there's damage to surrounding property or structures or other public safety reasons, then the tree has to come down. You're just saying replace a tree on the approved species list of two-inch caliber?
Yeah.
For residents.
For residents. But again, we would need to alter our motion if that's what we wanted to do. I've got Councilperson Meyer and Fosser.
I make amendment to my motion uh, to add the, the verbiage that Mayor Protem Kirkland and then.
Amending.
Amending for the.
Letter F.
To amend letter F and come back with the changes on our second reading next week, or next, whenever our next meeting is.
Councilperson Fosser, do you accept that? Perfect. So we have a new amended motion and a second. Any other discussion, Council? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero. Now we're on to item 10D. Consider an act on ordinance 2025-30, amending the FY 24-25 budget by reducing the hotel occupancy tax reserve amount by $350,000 and increasing the hotel occupancy tax fund operating expenses by $350,000. Madam City Manager.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem, can you hear me? Okay. Um, so there are three uh, known events, and then there's a fourth that's up and coming. The first is the focus advocacy, the qualified hotel project uh, that we've spoken about, um, adding us to the 1,000-foot perimeter limit for a qualified hotel. Um, the purchase of 151.
Wow.
Uh, the next was the purchase of 1311 Walnut for 151, 406. Um, $50,000 for events separate and apart uh, of the 75 to visit Bastrop. And then 48,594 for convention center repairs, cleaning, other. Um, there is some carpet that is in need in repair. And really, my goal is as we march toward a qualified hotel project in another area and this transitions into a recreation center, God willing, fingers crossed, that we don't transition something to the general fund that's in dire need of repair, that we begin to make those repairs now. That would change the line item and contractual services from 2.136 to 2.486. The hot fund is approximately 2989957 in reserve with 969 of that being above the required reserve limit. So, any questions?
So this would leave 620,000 in reserve?
No, this leaves 2 million.
I'm sorry, above the minimum is what I meant, yes. But yes, agreed. Okay, questions?
Yes, um, what's the 50 thou, so the $50,000 for events is something that we didn't budget in '25?
No, it's other events. Um, we consistently under-budget for Mardi Gras. Um, there are other events downtown that both Main Street and everybody else is cooking up as we begin to progress toward a more robust Main Street. I don't know what those events would equal, but I can't go to visit Bastrop, so.
Okay.
Anything that would come back to us for approval?
Yes, it would come back to the Council for approval.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilperson Meyer and Councilperson Fosser on the second. Any other discussion, Council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero. Item 10E, consider an act on resolution 2025-64, creating a $2,500 spending limit for council travel and training.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This uh, was at the request of Councilmember Lee to bring back a clarified version of what exactly was spent on training and travel, and we went back uh, to FY 22 that staff could do so cleanly. Um, each one of the slides shows training and travel in '22, '23, '24, and '25. Staff's recommendation is the same, to give each council member an allocated amount of $2,500 for training and travel. Not take into account um, the separate galas and things that are purchased as a city collective for you guys. So my prior recommendation was include your tickets to those galas. We do support a wide range of nonprofit in that fund also, so um, I don't want to take away from their required fundraisers by doing that. Any questions?
Yeah, I don't understand what you just said, so you wanted to?
So my prior motion was $2,500, and that includes training, travel, and your tickets to events. Um, we have many of you who say you're gonna go to an event and we buy a ticket and then you don't go to the event.
Okay, that ain't me.
Um, and so, um, but it, it felt like a punishment to those third parties, those nonprofits who rely on us to purchase tables and those kinds of things. So I don't want to take that from the council members' training and travel budget.
Do that separate.
Yes.
And can we have a separate code for that, so it's not under-training? It will be all?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So 2,500 for actual travel and training. Okay, I'm on board with that, thank you.
Any other questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Councilperson Plunkett, a second from Councilperson Meyer. Any other discussion?
Yes, I do, I have, um, I just wanted to comment on the 2,500 because looking at the percentages, and, and I, I came in in, in '23 to '24, so I'm, I'm just looking at percentages. Uh, since I, I don't want to comment on any other year that I wasn't here. But the $2,500 um, is more, is more than enough of taxpayer dollars uh, for us to spend because our percentages range from uh, '24 example, year '24, anywhere from the lowest being 7.45 from a council member to the highest being 51.54%. So, $2,500, i- it's time, we get on a budget. We all have to be on budgets. Y'all have to be on budgets, this is your money we're spending, so I can't agree more with this, and I thank you, City Manager, for coming up with the system.
Okay, Council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously, four to zero. We are now on to item 11, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
We are now adjourned. 8:22 PM, yee-haw.